Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 10, 2017, meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mayor Garbetian is traveling on city business to Armenia and Korea, and in the month of October, I'm the mayor pro tem, so I will be serving in his capacity. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Chris.
Divine.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Protem Najarian.
Here. Will you all please join me in our flag salute? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Let us join in prayer for our city as we ask for guidance and wisdom for tonight's meeting. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We ask that the brave men and women who serve in our armed forces are safe and return home to their families. We pray for those first responders who are fighting the fires raging across California from the far north of this state to the south and have resulted in the loss of lives and of so much property and continue to rage on. Please watch over those who put their lives at risk to save others. We ask for all of this and peace here at home and around the world, tonight and always. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the October 10, 2017, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Friday, October 6, 2017, on the Bolton Board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is the next item?
Next item is presentation of appointments at 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, October 17, 2017.
Ms. Beers.
Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the City Council for October 17. We have no business agenda items for the Housing Authority. We do have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority to commence at 3:00 P. M. We have one item, interim chief information officer and director of community development. This is regarding the implementation of Housing Authority adopted 2017-18 budget amendment for a professional services agreement with Emphasis Software, and this is in support of Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program. That afternoon, we do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. This is director of community development. This is about the downtown holiday trolley proposal. And second, we have director of community development, Montrose Vision 2020 update. In the evening for the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 P. M., we have two items under consent, director of public works. This is design and engineering services for renovations at fire stations 26, 28, and 29. And fire chief, this is regarding the household hazardous waste discretionary. This is an award of a grant for 2017-2018. Under action items, we have one item, director of public works. This is regarding the police department's museum that they're trying to build, and it's will be before you. It's a resolution that rejects all bids and a contract award. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And what is the next item?
Next item is the mayor's commendation for cycle 11 for the student ambassadors. And Mr. Mayor Protem, if you'll allow me to just a moment. Mr. Mayor Protem and council, as many have become familiar with the young faces that greet them every week at City Hall, this is a program that was started a number of years ago now in its 11th cycle. It attracts students from our local Glendale Public High Schools. Of course, any Glendale High School student is welcome to apply. The purpose of it is to introduce our local students to civics, to civic government, and we have had a number of folks go through it, some now currently employed with the city, some interning with the city, others are in colleges from here in Southern California, as far back east as Harvard, Northwestern, and other prestigious institutions. And what these students do is basically explain to people who are visiting City Hall for the first time how to address you here on the dais, what is on the agenda, what their rights are as citizens to understand how the City Council meetings work. And by doing so, hopefully, they get a little bit of insight about local government, and maybe curiosity has peaked and the seeds are planted for them to one day run for office and succeed you up there. So this year's cycle, or cycle 11, I am proud to introduce the people who are completing their cycle and moving on. We have Aidan Milanovic Rooney from Crescent Valley High School, Ethan Moose from Glendale High School, Evelyn Moradian from Hoover High School, Patrick Dirsohakian from Allen F. Daly High School, Arin S. Gandari from Hoover High School, Haik Pachayan from Glendale High School, Kenneth Court from Glendale High School, Maureen Cassabian from Clark Magnet High School, and Susanna Michaelian from Hoover High School. And these are the folks who are completing it. We've already started the next cycle, and so I would ask you to congratulate them and ask everyone in these chambers to thank them with a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. I'd like to thank you for implementing this program. How many years? Six years? How long has it been?
At least six years.
And it's a great way to expose our new generation to the events occurring in the council chambers, and oftentimes, they are the only smiling face that I see when I enter the room and when I leave. So to that extent, they are very much appreciated, and I know they're also helpful to the visitors, to our chamber with the cards and explaining the procedure and everything. So I do have, I do have the mayor's commendations, and I can't add to the fine words that you expressed about them. I would ask my colleagues to help me thank the ambassadors and pass out some of the little, we'll figure it out. We're getting good at this. How are you? I have yours. Congratulations. 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 Who's going to take it? Leo? Okay, let's turn around. Back up a little bit. Thank you again.
students, any parents, who think that they may know someone who's interested, if they are interested, if they have a son or daughter that they would like to have them be interested, they may apply by visiting the City of Glendale website and going to the city clerk's website, downloading an application, and sending it to the city clerk's office, or calling our offices by dialing 818-548-4000.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar, including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Would someone like to move the consent calendar?
I move.
I wanted to pull an item. Let's pull 4E.
Are you sure?
I just want to get questions answered so that the public knows what we're doing and that it is according to the standards of the, what is it?
Okay. So let's move the, will someone move the balance of the consent calendar, accepting E? Mr. Agajanian?
I move.
Balance, thank you. Mr. Sinanian, second.
Sure.
Let's take a roll call.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Najarian.
Yes. 4E, please.
4E is director of public works regarding removal and replacement of the City Hall entry steps in connection with specification number 3653 carried over from October 3, 2017. E1 is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for spec number 3653 and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Okay. Ms. Divine?
Yes, I just want to make sure, I think we've all been getting emails about this item and the steps, and I went down and looked at them and had someone on staff who is, has been involved in the preservation and maintaining the integrity of this building. So my question to you is simply, are we following the Secretary of Interior's standards of rehabilitation? Is there any way that we can save those steps and just patch them? Or is everything according to the standards?
Mr. Mayor Protem, member of City Council, Councilwoman Divine, I'll answer your second question first. Is there any way we save the steps? No. We have made several efforts. We have filled the cracks. We have done patchwork repairs. Unfortunately, they are not salvageable. It's a safety concern to us currently. We have consultant, at least four specialized concrete contractors, and they have all said you can Band-Aid it, but ultimately, it needs to be removed. As to meeting the specifications of Secretary of Interior, the short answer is yes. We have followed and we will finalize those requirements that are applicable to this particular project as it relates to replacement of the steps our concern. We've been working very closely with Jay Platt, our senior urban designer, regarding this matter, and we'll make sure that everything that's, like I said, applicable will be followed.
And I know that one of the, one of the standards is concerning the removal of distinctive materials. Can we be sure that we're going to replace those? And what are the distinctive materials of those, on those steps?
Councilmember Divine, I don't believe we have any distinctive material, like someone mentioned earlier, these are concrete steps with rebars, and that's all they are. Mr. Platt is not here to confirm that.
I thought he saw me.
No, no, we're not bringing it, Mr. Platt. I wasn't saying it. They're concrete steps.
And the only real, the only thing that sets them apart is the bull nose, but that can be.
We will replicate that with a future project, replacement project.
And my final question is Barbara Hall, whom you, we've kind of hired, is and has an expertise in historical restoration.
Yes, Ms. Hall has worked on historically distinctive projects in the past. She has it on her resume, and we have confirmed that.
I just want people to know that we are, we are attempting and making our best effort to maintain the integrity of this building, the historic, we know it's a historic treasure, and we absolutely would not do anything that would destroy any of that symbolic, the symbolism of a historic.
Absolutely.
Building. Thank you, thank you.
Don't put in an escalator, okay? No, I won't accept that. I'll be all over you if you put in an escalator. I want those concrete steps to be as close to the concrete steps that we currently see without the cracks.
Like for like.
And I also thought it was interesting to note that there was a concern about the railing, and that railing was replaced. That isn't even the original railing, so there's no reason, okay.
We'll repaint it and we'll make it look good.
Mr. Agajanian?
I am the guilty one, I think. I suggested those steps to be replaced. There are significant sign of aging and deterioration. Whoever wants, they can go and look at these steps to see if this is what you want in front of your City Hall. So I think this is a good idea. We better replace it, and it will be safer for those who will go outside this City Hall or coming to the City Hall will be safer for those who will come and leave this building. Thank you.
I'll move the item.
Sir, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Najarian.
Yes. Thank you. And the next item?
Next item is City Council and staff comments.
Let's start from Mr. Agajanian and work our way to this end. Any comments, Mr. Agajanian?
On?
This is council, council comment.
On anything.
Comment, okay. I have one comment, probably. If our fearless clerk can show the picture. For a long time, people were complaining to me that when they drive, they can't see the signs on the streets. Street signs are not visible, or it's hard to see. As you may see here, you can't even read what it says. So they were telling me this is not worthy of Glendale. So I took a few pictures, and as you can see, they're in bad shape, but I'm glad to report that I saw now new signs are coming. It's very visible, very nice. So to all those who are calling me, so apparently, the city is in process of replacing them. Is that true, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
So you want to add something for?
I would defer to my same colleague.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Protem, council members, council member Agajanian, that is true. We have completed phase one of the replacement program, which primarily concentrated in the core business district of the downtown area. We are in the process of hiring contractors to start on phase two, which will be the outer areas of the downtown.
Okay. So we will see this, when it will be replaced entirely?
Sometime next year, I would say spring of summer of 2018, with complete phase two.
This is to all those who were complaining, so they are in process of replacing them.
Ask a question if you don't mind. So are you replacing all the signs, or just you determining those that need to be replaced and replacing those?
No, councilmember Sinanian, only those signs that need replacement, that have faded and not legible anymore.
And I wonder, is there, is there like a science to why and when and how these signs deteriorate?
The signs that are facing the sun, obviously, deteriorate faster.
The sun, so the sun's, maybe rain a little bit?
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
I call Louise. Louise.
It's on the list.
Anything else, Mr. Agajanian? Ms. Divine?
Yes, I'd like to request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Nina Jorgensen, who passed away last Tuesday at the age of 77. Nina inspired countless numbers of young women during her four decades teaching at Glendale High School. She coached the Glendale High School girls volleyball team for 38 seasons from 1960 to 1998. She is the winningest coach in Glendale High School history. She taught physical education for 41 years. She also coached the Glendale High School winning swimming, basketball, and bedmitten teams. She played an instrumental role in the development of girls' sports at Glendale High School, and her teams won many league championships. I asked if she'd ever coached a boys' team, and I was told, no, she just coached the coaches. So Nina was a starter also for the 1968 U.S. Women's Volleyball Olympic Team and competed with the U.S. Women's National Team and within USA Volleyball, winning many national championships and medals. She even coached an Olympian. One of her Glendale High School students, Rosario Vivanco, a swimmer, competed in the same 1968 Olympics in Mexico City. In 2015, Nina was inducted into the California Interscholastic Federation, a CIF, Los Angeles City Section Hall of Fame. She will be dearly missed by many. So our request that we adjourn in her memory.
Mr. Sinanian?
Yes, thank you. Last week was a, was a very busy week for the City Council. On Thursday, we all attended the Candlelight Vigil hosted by the Commission on Status of Women and YWCA. Candlelight Vigil meant to promote the struggle against domestic violence, and it was, as every year, it was a very nice event. Also, on Thursday, we, we attended the, I think most of us attended, the Glendale Police Department's Museum Project fundraiser, which was sponsored by U.S. Armenia TV Channel. And I'm not sure what the final tally was for that event, I don't know if anyone knows, but funds were raised for our projected museum, which will be housed at our police department and will provide the space for all the historical paraphernalia and clothes and vests and all the other stuff associated with our, with the history of our police department. Last week, our county supervisor was here visiting Glendale and giving a speech about transportation, which was very well attended and very informative. A lot of our residents and even some of us had a chance to ask questions of our supervisor and were encouraged by her enthusiasm for transportation, and obviously, her role on the MTA board is very important with that regard. Today, at the Metropolitan Water District, where I represent the City of Glendale, that's the body that basically decides water issues in the region in Southern California, the board, through 68% majority, approved the California Water Fix, which, if you remember, about three weeks ago, the City Council voted on and approved with the absence of one council member, but otherwise approved unanimously. So we are going to have a major water project, the largest water project in California history, which is going to shore up our water supply and make sure that in times of emergency, under the circumstances where the weather patterns are changing and we're going to be getting less snow, melting snow and ice runoff water, but more sort of heavy rains that need to be captured immediately, all that water is going to be preserved, safe, and used for our purposes, at least part of it is for our purposes. And last week, with connection to that, on Thursday, I, along with several board members, directors of the MWD, had a chance to talk to the governor, meet with the governor, and talk about the water issues in California and receive his strong, strong support for this project. That's it.
Mr. Najarian? Thank you. The Oktoberfest in Montrose was a big success, as it usually is. This was their 40th year, their annual event, raising funds for the Chamber of Commerce and exposing visitors to the unique neighborhood of the Montrose Shopping Park. In addition to the adjournment in memory of Nina Jorgensen, I would also request that we co-adjourn the meeting in the memory of Vartas Yevgaya. Vartas passed away on September 30 at the age of 81. He was the son of an Armenian genocide survivor. He is an, he was an Armenian from Ethiopia. We've heard of Armenians from all other parts of the world, but this gentleman was born in the Ethiopian Armenian community. And he's perhaps best known for his class action lawsuit against the New York Life Insurance Company to collect life insurance policies owed to the victims of the Armenian genocide. And this was truly a groundbreaking bit of jurisprudence, resurrecting these policies after approximately 100 years had passed. He continued his efforts in many event, in many respects, against the Republic of Turkey. His latest efforts, although unfinished, were to recover the grounds of the Incherlik Air Base, which was apparently owned by a member of his wife's family before the genocide began. And you can imagine that has not been met with much enjoyment from the Republic of Turkey. He was an author and wrote many books about the genocide. He, prior to establishing his private law practice in Glendale, Vartas served the United States as the Special Assistant for International Operations to the Director of the country's Domestic Volunteer Agency and as the Assistant Director of the Peace Corps. When Armenia became an independent republic in 1991, Vartas served Armenia as a legal advisor and authored the first draft of the Armenian Constitution, and he will be missed dearly. Thank you.
If I may add?
Mr. Agajanian?
Besides New York Life Insurance, he still also acts a French insurance company also, I just want to add.
Mr. Orchova?
Yes, sir. If it pleased City Council, I'd like to get one of our CSP staff to come up under staff comments to talk about the Fall Festival. Alena Mazaspian, come on up and tell us a little bit about it for council.
Let me put that presentation on hold one moment.
And go to Mr. Sinanian for another. I think we forgot to mention the Glendale Tech Week, which is in progress and happening as we speak. There is an event happening right now while we're in council, and tomorrow, actually, the activities will pick up. I'm not sure if we have, do we have, are we, do we have an electronic format schedule that we can put up for a second?
Try, we can see if there's something from downstairs. Otherwise, I'll be happy to bring up the website.
Okay, if you can do that, but.
Well, tomorrow's easy.
Tomorrow, tomorrow's easy because everything's happening tomorrow, starting at 8:30 a.m. at the Alex, and most, if not all, of the events tomorrow will be at the Alex. And there will be tech-oriented, clearly, job creation-oriented. And again, to be specific, we do have a tech job fair that will be happening. That's still Thursday morning, right?
Yes, Thursday.
Yes, Thursday at 9:00 a.m. So I encourage everyone to come down for that, to come down to downtown Central Library and make sure they're present. It's a lot of fun events, so if you go to our website, you'll see the schedule of events, and you can pick or pick and choose, and hopefully, it's as useful for you as it will be for the rest of the city.
And if I might add, you can check on that schedule. I believe it's Thursday afternoon, there's an apprenticeship fair where high school students can go to the library. There will be businesses there that will be offering paid apprenticeships in different tech businesses. So some of you, especially our ambassadors, might be interested, interested in attending that at the Central Library on Thursday at 4:00. Correct? 4 o'clock? The apprenticeship?
I, I see 4 o'clock, Meet the Funders event.
On Thursday?
On Thursday.
When is the apprentice?
That's right. I know where I'm seeing it. But it's a, it's a pretty full schedule. Again, anyone who's interested in the, in the tech industry or is professionally engaged in that industry, I think this is a great opportunity not to be missed by anyone.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, council? Let's go back to the city manager.
I would only say, one, thanks to, to the council for funding this effort, and certainly thanks to councilmember Sinanian, who has spearheaded this effort. Nothing happens without a team, and all five of you have been instrumental in taking what was last time a pilot project to what it is today. But certainly, the five council members and the heartfelt passion from Mr. Sinanian has helped make this a reality, and I think this year will be truly an amazing year for Tech Week.
Thank you. And you know what? I'll add to that to give credit to our staff. This year's effort is such a departure from last year's, again, last year was just a pilot, that at our Pitch Fest, which will happen on Thursday, starting at 2:00 at the Alex Theater, the prize, the prize for the winning company is $25,000. So this is testament, and by the way, this is money that's been raised from sponsors. So, this is testament, and by the way, this is money that's been raised from sponsors, tech sponsors that are currently in Glendale. So, we're very serious about this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to our community development.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Najarian, Council members and city staff. My name is Melina Mazaspian, Community Services Coordinator with the Community Services and Parks Department. I'm here tonight to invite our guests attending tonight's meeting and our viewers at home that the department is proud to announce its inaugural Fall Festival, taking place on Saturday, October 21st, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Pacific Park and Community Center. The event will feature two food trucks, District Burger and La Puff Truck, a petting zoo, carnival games, arts and crafts, a bounce house, the infamous Glendale Rocks climbing wall, and the event's feature attraction is going to be a pumpkin patch with real pumpkins, which will be available to purchase. So, we're really excited about this event. It's our first time doing it, and we hope that everyone comes out and brings their families and enjoys the fall/autumn season, so hopefully we'll get some cool weather coming in next weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much for organizing this.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from staff at this point?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I just want to mention that although you received a memo and I'm sure the city attorney had briefed you as well, but for our home viewing audience and anyone that was here, on the consent calendar, there were modifications made to, you were given updated motions and resolutions on 4D and amount for the report to City Council regarding tenant improvements to accept $90,000 in federal funding. The actual amount for funds to be accepted was $92,000. So, I just wanted to...
I need to re...
I think it was...
I believe that was part of the updated agenda, though, so it's part of the...
Sounds incorporate. Okay, thank you. Very good, let's move to the next item.
Under community event announcements, there's one card from Victoria Dochoglian.
Okay, yes indeed, Victoria Dochoglian.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council members and city staff. My name is Victoria Dochoglian. I am a field representative for Assemblymember Laura Friedman of the 43rd District. I am here to announce that the Armenian-American Medical Society will be hosting its 8th Annual Glendale Health Festival. The event will take place at the Pacific Community Center at 501 South Pacific Avenue between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. They will be offering complete health evaluations for free, which include blood work, dental exams, referrals for pap smear, mammograms on the site, cancer screenings, medical consultations, mental health education and evaluations, hearing tests, medication consultation and onsite drug disposal, CPR training, and for the first time with the help of the Lions Club, this year, they will be offering thousands of prescription recycled eyeglasses for free. So, there will be eye screenings and fittings for kids who are five years and over with the prescription sunglasses, and then there will be eye screenings to detect early eye disease for children between the ages of six months and six years old. There will also be flu shots offered for pediatric vaccines, multi-dose flu vaccines, and preservative-free flu vaccines. And then also, between the hours of 10:30 and 11:30 a.m., there will be presentations on parenting, addiction, and immigration issues. The event is open to the entire public and children of all ages. A free healthy lunch will be provided, and there will also be a face painting booth and a jumper for the kids. For more information, you can visit glendalehealthfestival.com or amsc.com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Victoria. I don't have any other cards for this portion of our communication, so let's move to the next item.
Under action items, under 8A is Director of Public Works regarding replacement of ladder truck for use by the Fire Department. 8A1 is resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of an Ascendant 107 Tiller Heavy Duty Aerial Ladder Truck with an Arrow XT chases from Pierce Manufacturing Inc. in amount not to exceed $1,450,000.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir, this is a scheduled replacement for the Fire Department. You'll note that it is on action because it is a dispense with competitive bid, but as you know, our entire fleet is made up of Pierce apparatus, and so in the interest of making sure that our mechanics and our operators, the engineers and captains themselves, can make maximum use of the apparatus that they have, we are in keeping with Pierce vehicles and Pierce apparatus. If you have any specific questions about the capabilities of the apparatus, I know that Deputy Chief and Battalion Chief are here with us tonight, and anything specifically to the proposal before you, Mr. Galanian and his folks can answer that.
Okay, are there any questions from Council on this item?
This fire truck that we're replacing is over 20 years old.
Yes, ma'am.
This Councilwoman Devine is nearly 20 years old, has 88,000 miles and over 5,300 hours of usage. It's been in the shop, actually, for almost three and a half months out of the year last year.
So, it's time to replace it, yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Najarian?
Yes, next item.
AB is City Manager regarding legislative update bills to the Governor. B1 is a motion to note and file the report.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir, this is a note and file that will give you a thumbnail sketch of all that has happened in Sacramento and how it may impact us, and for that, our program supervisor, Christine Powers, will give you that overview, because indeed, it has been a rather busy year on lots of different fronts. Christine?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem Najarian, members of Council and staff. Christine Powers with the City Manager's Office. So, the report today provides you with an update on the status of state legislation that the city of Glendale has taken a position on. As you know, the city takes positions on bills based on its legislative platform. That platform is devised in relations to Council's strategic goals and is updated periodically as strategic goals are modified for Council. So, the city's been tracking almost 100 bills since December of 2016, when the first of the state's two-year legislative session began. The deadline for bills to pass out of both houses was September 15th, at which point all bills that passed went to the governor's desk. The governor has until this Sunday to sign or veto all bills. This report is focused on the bills that the city took positions on that did land on the governor's desk. We will come back in December before the end of the year to provide you with a full legislative update once the governor signs or vetoes all the bills, and we will also provide you with a look ahead into the second year of the legislative session, and at that point, our state lobbyist, David Jones, will also be down here to help provide that update. So, a number of big bills became two-year bills by the end of the session because amendments couldn't be worked out in time or because members felt like they didn't have enough concessions to move forward. So, that is SB 100, that is DeLeon's bill on renewable energy and going carbon-free by 2045, and another one was AB 1250, and that was the bill that would have prohibited cities from contracting out. That got amendment amended to only impact counties, but it is moving forward, and it's still a work in progress, so we will definitely keep an eye on that bill. On September 29, Governor Brown signed a housing package, and this consists of 15 bills to help increase the supply and affordability of housing in California. The measures provide funding for affordable housing, reduce regulations, boost construction, and strengthen existing housing laws. The main bills in this package were SB 2, this was Atkins' bill to create a $75 document transfer fee tax, and that would go towards affordable housing projects. There's SB 3, that's Bell's $4 billion housing bond that will go on the November 2018 ballot. And SB 35, that's Weiner's bill that preempts local discretionary land use authority by streamlining multifamily developments with simply ministerial approval of projects. City of Glendale supported SB 2 and 3, and we strongly opposed SB 35. The League of California Cities will be holding a webinar to go over the elements of the housing package for the different city attorneys throughout the state and what this means for cities. So, we will come back with more on that in our December update as well. So, in total, 16 bills that the city took action on are part of this legislative cycle. They made it to the governor's desk, including some of the ones that I mentioned as part of the housing package. The report provided by staff provides a summary on those bills and the status. I just want to take a moment to point out a couple of them. SB 1, that's the transportation funding bill. The governor already signed that in April, we're all well aware of that. This will create the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Program to address deferred maintenance on state highways and local streets. Cities are right now in the process of putting together their projects and submitting them to the state, but as you probably know, there are petitions being circulated to repeal this bill, so we'll see what happens with that. SB 5 is DeLeon's bill that was co-authored by our local representatives, Assemblymember Friedman and Senator Portantino, and this bill will enact the California Drought, Water Parks, Climate Coastal Protection, and Outdoor Access for All Act of 2018. This is a $4 billion bond that, if signed by the governor, he hasn't signed it yet, will appear on the June 2018 ballot. Assemblymember Friedman was able to secure language in the bill that would provide 20 million in funding for the Glendale Narrows Riverwalk project, but this bond would still need to be approved by a voter, so we'll see what happens with that. And then probably the most high-profile bill of this cycle was SB 649, that's Huiso's Wireless Telecommunications Facility Bill. This bill, if passed, would set a new precedent by taking local discretion on issuance and design of wireless telecommunication facilities away from local governments, and it would cap the rental income of each site to $250. The governor hasn't said publicly where he is with this bill, but his Department of Finance is opposed to the bill, and that definitely doesn't bode well for the bill, so keep you posted on that one, too. From the list of bills that Glendale took a position on, I just want to update you, three additional bills were signed by the governor. AB 210, that establishes the homeless multidisciplinary personnel teams. AB 466, that is the establishment of the Upper LA River and Tributaries Working Group. Glendale would be a part of that working group. We got an amendment in there for that. And AB 1180, which creates the Stormwater Permit Compliance Fund to offer grants to address stormwater runoff pollution. A couple of other bills mentioned in the report that Glendale watched but didn't take a position on, SB 54 was DeLeon's Sanctuary State Bill. This was actually signed by the governor on October 5th. It was heavily amended from how it first appeared, and it's a much tamer version of the bill. The governor has prohibited law enforcement agencies from using resources to investigate, interrogate, detain, detect, or arrest people solely for immigration purposes, and it also prohibits local and state law enforcement from cooperating with immigration authorities to the extent it violates any laws. SB 568 is a bill that the governor signed on September 27th. This makes changes to elections as of January 2019. The date of the statewide district primary and the presidential primary will be moved from June to March, and will continue the requirement that those elections be consolidated. The impact of this on our Glendale municipal elections will be brought to Council for a report, I believe, on November 7th, for you to discuss the implications of that and the consolidation of our elections. The list of all the bills that the governor has signed or vetoed to date, whether it impacts Glendale or not, is included, just for you to peruse, and staff is ready to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Questions?
And we're going to have a session on this with our consultant, our lobbyist in Sacramento at the end of the year, you said?
Yes.
To the recap of all these, and hopefully we'll have some answers with respect to the cell tower bill.
Yeah, by then, yes, Councilmember Sinanian, by then, we will have resolution on all the bills, and we'll be able to provide City Council with an impact of that, and we'll have by then better digested the housing package, too, to kind of pencil out what that means for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I just, I don't have a question. Thank you for this report, Ms. Powers, just that there seems to be a real focus on funding affordable housing, and that is a good thing to report, and I think we all have to watch for the ballot measures 5 and 3. We have a lot at stake in both of those, and so hopefully, when the time comes, we'll get support from our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, this is a receivable file, a note and file, so moved...
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item?
Next item on the agenda, City Attorney regarding denial and findings regarding 2116 Rimcrest Drive, appeal of tentative parcel map number GLN 1631. C1 is motion denying tentative parcel map number GLN 1631 and making findings.
Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of Council, the findings from the Rimcrest case that you heard two weeks ago are before you. The findings prepared by our office consistent with the record in the case and the Council's deliberation. Happy to answer any questions.
So, is this, we're just cleaning things up?
This is, two weeks ago, you directed us to prepare the findings, so all this is, is those findings that are consistent with the record.
I'll move the item.
Oh, hold on, I have a question. So, this is to move that we are not approving the project, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is to deny the project.
But I was in position that I was in favor of it, so how would I...
Well, if you want to continue to vote against the project, you would vote against it, or vote for the project, you would vote against this motion.
Okay.
I'll say this one.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Thank you. Next item?
9A, under hearings, Director of Community Development regarding amendments to Chapter 3436 of the Glendale Municipal Code regarding density bonus incentives, case number PZC 1720109. 9A1 is an ordinance for introduction. If your fire is in production.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir, this is a series of amendments to our existing code that really reflects practices and actions that are in place today, but that brings language changes pursuant to state law into the municipal code. To detail these items for you, we'll have our principal planner, Laura Stotler, come forward and give you this presentation. This is a public hearing, and did we open public hearing?
I will open the public hearing.
With that?
Thank you, members of Council, staff. My name is Laura Stotler, Principal Planner, and we're here today to talk about updating our, whoops, updating our code, and let me see if I can get the right way to move this next. There we go. We adopted a density bonus back in 2006, and that's when we amended our code. We are now looking to update it. A density bonus is an incentive offered to a developer to build an affordable housing project, and it can consist of relaxation in a development code, additional residential density, or a waiver of parking requirements. It's part of the California Government Code that we're required to do this. Since 2015, we've had six different state amendments related to density bonus, and if you've just heard, the state has just adopted an additional housing package, so we may actually come back with more of these in a future year. But what we're seeking to do now is update our code, so we at least meet the law as it was last January and implemented the first of this year. We do have a negative declaration that was done back in 2006. We believe that's still applicable today, and so that is a part of your packet for the information when you consider this amendment. And again, the purpose of our law changing now is so we would be consistent with the state law. What we're changing in our code include definitions, to bring them current. We're looking at calculation of density bonus. We actually have a chart that has that, we're updating that chart. The amount of density bonus, we're adding transitional foster youth, veterans, and homeless persons. And when it comes to council approval for additional amount of density bonus, we are requesting that council actually hold a hearing and have that approval, so it would not be delegated to staff if they wanted to exceed what the maximum is provided by the state. We do have different findings that are identified for affordable housing, for parking concessions. We also have changes in the parking requirements based if it's a major transit stop or a high-quality transit corridor. I do have a slide that would explain what some of that is. Actually, I don't, I'll take it back. What that, if you're on a high-quality, a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridor, what that would do is allow you to have lower parking requirements. And it's quite substantial if you have a project that's on 100% rental for low-income families, and you're within a half-mile of a major transit stop, then parking is reduced to .5 spaces per unit. And that's also similar for parking requirements, if it is a senior project, again, parking down to .5 spaces per unit. We also have parking concessions, if it's 100% rental for low-income families for special needs, then parking can go down to .3 spaces per unit if they're located within a half-mile of unobstructed bus route. So... So major transit stop would be an existing rail station, intersection of two or more major bus routes with a 15-minute headway, so that's a bus that runs frequently. And then any type of a major transit corridor that's actually been designated by SCAG. And then a high-quality transit corridor is a corridor with fixed bus route service that has a 15-minute or headway during commute hours. And for what this means for Glendale is essentially, South Glendale, it has a lot of transit, and so most of those parking concessions would be available for projects in that location. For affordability, we're seeing those changes in our code to match state law. Right now, we have 30-year affordability. State law has changed to 55-year affordability for sale units as well as for rentals. We also have equity sharing agreement that, I'm going to point out the 55-year term that is for rentals, the for-sale units is only for the first owner. That would be required to have affordable purchase price. For equity sharing agreement, for ownership, that's been changed under state law. We've had that, we've been implementing that, but that's now going to be put in our code. And we're also noting that if a project already has, or property already has affordability restrictions, it would not be eligible to have a density bonus project on that property. And again, there's a lot of concern with replacement units. If you have a property that already has units on it that are used for affordable rentals, then those units would need to be replaced if somebody comes in with a new project. The assumption is that if an owner does not know who's living on his property in rental units, that approximately right now, the affordable percentage would be, we would be 66% of the units that are on the site would be assumed to be low-income, so any new project that would come in would have to provide at least that same number of units at the same affordability category as part of their new project. That's replacement units. And that, again, is a presumption of affordability. We do have a new section on condo conversions for low-income housing. Right now, the city prohibits conversions of units that are over-density. We've had a number of downzonings in the past, and we cannot make a finding that says a new, an older apartment building that is above current density could be converted because it wasn't, it will not meet our current general plan. However, under the state law, if a person that has an over-density apartment building wants to convert it, if they make a certain percentage of those units affordable, then there's a possibility that those units could be converted. Again, a conversion, there's no requirement that you would approve a conversion, but at least the option is open if a developer wanted to propose that. And again, we have more restrictions that if somebody wanted, if you do have affordable units on the site that are proposed for conversion, those units would need to be replaced at affordable level. So we wouldn't be displacing any, anybody who's renting that is, has affordable incomes. We also have, as part of your packet, a density bonus housing plan and housing agreement requirement. You'll see there's requirements of, for us to track a project, if a proposal is given to us, we want the developer to outline that proposal. That would be the housing plan. Once it's approved, then we want it to be recorded on the property, so you would have a deed restriction prior to issuance of a building permit. This would assure that everybody is aware that there's additional density bonus provided for the property, so if a property is later sold before it's built or occupied, that the affordability restriction would still stay on the property. And then there is a section in the code, we've never seen it used before, but there is a possibility that a commercial developer and an affordable housing developer can partner, and they can come in, they can propose a housing development where perhaps a commercial developer would give a donation to ensure construction of affordable housing project. That would be a partner project. Does not have to be on the same property. And again, we haven't seen those before, but this is a proposal by the state to encourage development of affordable housing. It does have a sunset of January 1st, 2022, if somebody wanted to pursue that, and there's always the possibility that the state may extend that. We also have charts for calculating incentives. We just want, we updated those. And again, we have application submittal requirements that are included for the density bonus, the density bonus housing agreement. And the reason we want to have these recorded is also not only to inform future owners, but also so that we can track our affordable housing projects as they come through, because we are going to have a requirement that we report them to the state. And community development staff and the planning commission do recommend that you adopt this ordinance so we can bring our code into compliance with state law. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Agajanian?
On page three, affordability, when you were reading, can you bring that page? It says page three on mine. I don't know. Affordability.
Slide.
It doesn't say the slide number.
Slides 07, 5 and 10.
There is a slide number.
I don't know which one that is.
You go to findings and parking.
Findings and parking?
And afterward is affordability.
One more? Yeah.
Okay. It says, so we know that if they are making affordable housing, it should be, the term would be, should be for 55 years.
For rentals, that's correct.
The next one is what I have a question. If they are selling the unit, that 55 years will be to the first owner? Is that what it says?
Right. The first owner is the one who is required to show that they're, that it's being sold to somebody who has an affordable level of income. So it's a lower-level income family or moderate-level income family, depending on what the proposal is for the for-sale unit.
You mean...
It's just the first owner. After that, it's not required.
The first owner should hang on to the unit for 55 years?
No, they may sell the unit when they want to sell the unit, but the idea is that it's, it is their unit. They bought it, they're purchaser, they own it, and so it's the first person that has to show that they meet the affordable criteria. If they do sell the unit, there is a certain percentage, if they're making a profit, that they do have to pay back, but they don't have to own the unit for 55 years. It's the rental agreement is for 55 years.
Okay. If that person who...
Versus ownership.
First owner then turns around and rents the unit, then what happens?
That's a good question.
Parking covenant usually is for owner occupied only, so they couldn't turn it into an income property. But would that be part of an affordable housing agreement, Mike?
I'll ask Yvette to answer that.
Good evening, members of council. Yvette Newkin, Assistant City Attorney at the City Attorney's Office. What we do is we enter into agreements with individual tenants, and in this case, it would be an owner who purchased the property, and that owner would be prohibited from renting out their unit. Of course, enforceability becomes an issue, but enforcement becomes an issue, but that is, they are prohibited from renting it. And how an equity share agreement works is they would need to be qualified as, at the income level, either low, very low, or moderate. And once they're qualified, they purchase it at an affordable price, and if they sell it too quickly, then they do have to pay back some of the money to the city, some of their equity. So they have to share the equity with the city. There's a rather long formula that gets applied to what happens if they sell it and how much they have to return to the city.
It's structured in a way to prevent a windfall, somebody from buying it and flipping it right away. You have to pay the difference between the market price and the affordable price in addition to an equity share, any share of the appreciation that the home has accumulated over time.
And then that money goes back into the housing fund to be used to create more affordable housing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, we have to do this, right? We have to upgrade our codes to be in compliance with the state law, so...
Can I move the...
Yes, you may. I'll close the hearing.
It just has to be... Introduction.
So you will introduce this, Mr. Agajanian?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to reflect, introduction by Mr. Agajanian. And this will come back next week, or are we going to wait for the full council, or we don't need?
Come back next week, I think. It's pretty pro forma.
Okay. I don't think there's any reason.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Kazakhian.
Next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is five-minute portion. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. First speaker is Nick Franklin. Let's get you a microphone, Nick.
Hold on a sec. Good evening to everybody. This is directed to Mr. Najarian. For the bus stop situation, it is still needed to be worked on, but when you put in the new benches, benches, there's no back support on the benches that you're putting in. You're just putting in the benches, and that's fine, but older citizens in the city or people with disabilities that are able to be ambulatory, they need to have back support when they sit down, because if you're a person with a disability, or if you're a blind person, no, that's another item, there still has to be back support. You just can't put a bench there. I mean, it's fine to put the bench there because it's probably less, costs less money to do that, but the people still need back support because they have to have some back support in order to stand up. It'll make it easier for them to stand up, and if there's no back support, it makes it more difficult for them to stand up. So when you, when you put the, the new bus stop covers in, can you please consider putting in the complete, complete bench, please? That would really be nice. And then also for visually impaired people or totally blind people, there needs to be some rail somewhere on the structure that you have so that they will know where they're at, especially if there's no person waiting on a bus to help them. You know, they don't know where they're at. So that would help to consider that, and it would seem to me that MTA, since you're on the board, MTA could help us with this to defer some, some cost. And also, it has been brought to my attention that Mr. Ochoa is moving down the road. I got this from Glendale News Press, so I wish you well. And thank you for, for your kind attention. Also, I talked to one of my friends who works for Glendale PD, and he said that I should bring this to your attention. Since we already have a very qualified assistant city manager, it would seem right to offer her the position that is being vacated because she already knows about the city, she's concerned for all of us, and works very well with all of you fine people. Now, if you need to find somebody to fill her space after she is wonderfully promoted, it would, it would be understood, but I pray that you would give this some strong consideration because then you don't have to go out and review new candidates to take Mr. Ochoa's chair. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Can I make a comment? Can we, as we replace benches, maybe think about replacing them with benches with backs or some sort of support?
Yes, we have a report coming back to you on covered bus stops, and we'll look at the apparatus that is within that cover.
Perfect.
And I've asked for that, both the cover and the benches several times already.
Next speaker is Mr. Mohill.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Ms. Ochoa, last Tuesday night, rather than conducting Glendale city business, you were in the city of Ontario accepting their new city manager position with a salary of $310,000 plus retirement pension benefits. Ms. Ochoa, you came to Glendale from the little hamlet of Monrovia with only 36,500 residents and about 300 employees. I'm sure the fact that you came from the more cosmopolitan city of Glendale with its robust population, nearly 200,000 residents, 1,500 city employees, and a multimillion-dollar budget helped you secure employment with the city of Ontario. Furthermore, Ms. Ochoa, you should thank your strongest supporters, councilmembers Devine and Najarian. In 2015, in a bad economy having laid off about 25% of the city workforce, councilmembers Devine, Najarian, and Garpetian pushed to approve your $43,000 a year pay increase. Ms. Ochoa, your heart was never in Glendale. It has always been about how much money you could extract from the strapped taxpayers. Since you came to the city of Glendale, you have only balanced the budget into the, into the black year after year by raising fees, taxes, more fees, water, electric rates. You have never, never, sir, balanced the budget into black without first gouging the city residents. In the first four months of your arrival in 2012, you laid off about 25% of our city workforce. Then you brought, then you brought in about 10 of your buddies from the city of Monrovia. On average, these employees were then earning about annually $70,000. In a matter of few years in Glendale, these employers are now earning annually between $150,000 and $200,000 with increases in pension benefits. In 2015, for example, Darlene Sanchez was a project manager for the city of Monrovia, earning about $70,000 annually. Annually, excuse me. Ms. Ochoa, you brought her to Glendale with an inflated title. She had three pay raises in three years, and today, her title is Deputy Development City Manager with a salary of almost $200,000 annually with retirement pension benefits. Ms. Ochoa, under your watch, our unfunded retirement pension obligations have grown from about $1.2 billion to almost $2 billion today. Ms. Ochoa, you are leaving our city more in red than when you arrived six years ago. Yes, more debt under your leadership is, will be your legacy. Ms. Ochoa, you and your countless employees are not public servants, but public gougers. Ms. Ochoa, many in this city will not miss you. In fact, we wish you would take along your confidence voters, councilmembers Devine and Najarian. Councilmembers, I understand Assistant City Manager Yasmin Beers has the insight track to become our next city manager. In addition, many other concerned citizens and staff believe she lacks technical know-how, has no vision, and would be the wrong choice for future leadership. Today, Ms. Ochoa is running around the city hall trying to convince councilmembers to vote for Assistant, Assistant City Manager Yasmin Beers as his replacement. Ms. Ochoa wants Mrs. Beers because she knows the city's skeletons, and she will protect and never expose these dealings and failed policies. and never expose these dealings and failed policies. Mrs. Beers is being supported strongly by council members Devine, Najarian, and Garpetian. Mrs. Devine, sadly, it seems your reasoning for supporting Mrs. Beers is because she's a woman and not her accomplishments. Mr. Najarian, the only reason you want Mrs. Beers is for her to be in your pocket for favors, just like your buddy, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Garpetian, for, for many who voted for you, to hear you are supporting Mrs. Beers is a disappointment. As a real estate broker, it seems the reason you want Mrs. Beers is to see more commercial and residential development. Council members, the number one problem facing our city is the pension crisis. Mrs. Beers' husband is also a government employee, therefore, how can we expect a leader to advocate for serious pension reform...
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
...when she would have a conflict of interest?
But I do have a question for you.
One, five more seconds, please. We have had too many scandals in our city and tonight we need to look outside these walls for a person with impeccable credentials. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mohill, much of the discussion and the points you raised were closed session confidential items. Can I ask you where you obtained that information from?
From God. Thank you.
From God.
And, and may I add, a lot of it was not even true, so I don't know where he's getting it. And, and I also want to say that I believe that when Mr. Ochoa received his raise, it was a unanimous decision, it was not just the two of us, Mr. Najarian. I'm just saying.
Thank you. Very well, I have no other cards. Do we have new business?
I have new business. I'd like to move that the claim of Sharon Deacon be compromised and resolved for the full and complete amount of $36,035 and the same is hereby approved and accepted and the finance director is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum payable to the claimant for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Is there a second?
I will not be seconding it, nor will, I'll just abstain, because I was not there during, when the decision was made.
So, Mr. Agajanian, would you like to second that?
Yes, second.
Settlement. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian abstains and Mayor Garpetian is absent.
Is there more new business? No. And we're going to adjourn?
In memory of Nina Jorgensen and Barca...
We are adjourned. Motion?
Second. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.